Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
To get started on our Tuesday, October 10th Legislative and Human Resources Committee, do you have any public comment today? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 2, Approval of Minutes and Motion.
So moved forward.
By Commissioner Cornix, support by Commissioner Vaughn. Item 3, Treasurer's Office Performance Measurement. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a vote for Approval of Minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll move on to Item 3, Treasurer's Office. Mr. Parrish.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. I want to give you an overview of what's happening in the Treasurer's Office through the lens of the performance measures. This morning, I'm going to go over a few different things, starting with how our mission activities align with board priorities. Then we'll look at some key performance metrics, talk about significant accomplishment, some key collaborations, and then finally, a look ahead. Pretty much everything we do in the Treasurer's Office aligns with your priorities related to stable revenues. The Kent County will have stable and predictable revenues to cover expenses. The mission of the Office of Treasurer is to collect lodging and delinquent real property taxes and manage all county funds within relative laws, regulations, policies, and community standards. Looking at some of the key goals and metrics, to collect delinquent real property taxes with the objective to receive an account for 100% of delinquent real property taxes, and by that, eligible property taxes. And we basically do that every year. Through the process that is in place, we do collect every dollar that we are legally allowed to collect. So it's been very successful. So we're very pleased with that number. To collect the lodging taxes due to the county, and our objective there is to audit at least 5% of the eligible establishments annually. We fluctuate around that number. For 2016, we were just shy of just about 24%. We are on track to meet or potentially exceed that goal for 2017. This will come back up under, we might talk about a look ahead. To invest the funds entrusted to the county treasurer in accordance with investment policies, number one, is to preserve 100% of investment principal. As you have all heard me talk about when I've given the investment report each winter, spring, we invest using what I call the SLIDE principle. Safety, liquidity, and yield in that order. Safety being paramount. Therefore, this represents the safety component. And in the 20 and a half years that I've here, I'm very proud to say that that number has always been 100%. We have never lost a penny of the principal. So we're very pleased with that. And we expect that that will continue going forward. Obviously, the purpose for investing is to generate some investment income for the general fund, the rest of the pool. We are finally seeing some movement in interest rates. So that in 2016, we did earn about $524,000. And the expectation is that we will be in the $600,000 range for 2017. It is a slow slog. It's affected not only by interest rates, but also by the county's fund balance. You know, I often refer to the days when we earned 6% and 7% on our investments. And the other component back then was we were sitting on about $130 million fund balance. We're now at half that approximately. So when you have less money to invest, it also means your investment income goes down. But we are seeing some improvement there. The fund balance has been holding very steady for the last several years, and interest rates are starting to creep up again. So we're hopeful that this will be able to contribute a little bit more to the general fund than we have in the past years. You know, the thing about our office is, you know, most of what we do is dictated at you or by county policy. We don't have a lot of variation in what we do. And therefore, you know, it's hard for me to come up with something that I consider to be a significant accomplishment that we did based on just the work of the county Treasurer's Office. So, but the one thing I am very proud of is, I think you're all of, is the work of our office did contribute to the county's AAA credit rating. And people ask me a lot, why is that important? And obviously, there's the financial aspect of it. Having a AAA rating means when we borrow, or when other communities borrow with our full-fledged credit backing, they save money. They save a fair amount of money. But in addition to, I think it sends a message to our taxpayers, the people who live and work in this community, and those who might be thinking about living and working in this community, that we are a well-managed county. So it's more than just the dollars and cents saved on interest income. It is a reflection of how well-managed we are. So I think it's very important, and I'm very, will work very hard to maintain the AAA rating as long as I'm in office. We do collaborate. I know collaborations are a big, it's kind of one of the hallmarks of Kent County, I think. And certainly, within our office, probably the best known is the local government investment pool, where we allow local units within Kent County to essentially have us invest money on their behalf as part of our pool. We have roughly, probably between 25 and 30 participants in that pool right now. And they've been very pleased with that offer. We do not charge the local units anything to participate. It really is a win-win because the larger the dollar volume is in the pool, the more opportunity we have to earn higher rates of investment income. So we benefit as well as they benefit. So it's a really, I think it's a really great tool that has been around since the eighties. We are one of, there is, Oakland County also has a pool, and which they mirrored off of ours. They do charge a small fee for their locals to participate. They decided that that was appropriate for them. We also collaborate with all the local units. There are 30, 35, counting the villages. And we work with all of them on tax collection. It's essentially a bifurcated system in Michigan, where the local billings, the initial billings go out and the initial collections are done by the local units. And then at a certain point in time, when taxes are deemed to be delinquent, we take over that process. So we have to work very closely with all of the local units, and we certainly do that. And then an interdepartmental collaboration is that by law, the county treasurer is responsible for the sale of a dog licensing. We have a really wonderful collaboration where the animal shelter takes the lead on that. They manage all the data. We do sell the tags in our office, but they really take the lead on it. They work with the local units as well to encourage them to also sell tags. So it really is a great collaboration with the animal shelter under the umbrella of the health. And then finally, a look ahead. And the first two were, have been on this, were on the slide the last time I did this presentation. Implementation of credit card security protocols. We are still, there is something called PCI, which is the Purchasing Card Interchange, I think, something like that. That basically dictates, not specifically the security protocols, as much as our reporting of how we meet the various levels of protocols. We're having a really difficult time figuring out what it is we need to report and to whom. It's a very vague system. And to really meet the requirements that they suggest we meet is a significant financial investment, potentially as much as $100,000, to have consultants come in to gather all of the necessary information. So we are continuing to get our, working with IT to get our arms around that. And that will then lead to the acceptance of online credit card payments. We do not want to implement that system until we are sure that we have the PCI compliance issues completely addressed. And then the third one, which is a new one this year, is the continued growth in the number of hotels in Kent County may ultimately lead to increased staffing needs. At one time, we had, in my department, we had two tax auditors that worked solely on hotel motel tax audits. Several years ago, that was brought down to one, which unfortunately happened through a death. But then we decided that we would try to streamline our process to keep, to have one auditor attempt to meet the requirements that we have and the goals that we have. She's done a terrific job. She's been, you know, been able to do well over 20 audits every year of the hotels. But we are now currently at 88 reporting hotels. And there are four or five more that are coming online in the next six to 12. And then there's a number of additional ones that will be opening up in the next one to three years. So if we are to continue to meet the goal of essentially auditing each hotel once every four years, we may need to look at either additional staffing or some other arrangement to meet the demand. You know, this is one of the times where it's a great problem to have. You know, we have, our occupancy rates are very strong these days, and it's obviously shown by all of the growth in the number of hotels. The new tower that Warner's going to move into is going to have a hotel on it. They actually started out with the idea of apartments and decided that demand was greater for hotel. And so that's how they're using that space. So it just, it's a, there's a real boom in hotel construction and hotel occupancy in our county. And we want to try to make sure that we continue to do our part to make sure those revenues come in. That's my formal presentation. As always, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Cornix.
Thank you, Chair Ulter. Thank you for the report, Ken. Appreciate it. So a few years ago, we had problems with the collection of some of that lodging taxes. Has that subsided, and do we have that pretty much taken care of or is it going to reoccur?
We did have one hotel that fell significantly behind.
Right.
Which they are now completely caught up with. That particular issue has gone away. We do, we are working. Hotel that did fall behind and recently changed hands. And we are working to try to collect. They, they do owe us about $100,000. We're confident that the new ownership is going to pick back up, but we do need to figure out how to collect that one. And so we're working on that.
And those are the only?
Yeah, everybody is very current. It's been, you know, it's, I guess, part of the positive of the boom that we're having is their revenues are stronger, they're able to meet their obligations to us much, much better. So it's just the one isolated case we have right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Chair. Sort of follow-up to Dan's question of the less than 100 establishments that you call on. Get around to them every four years. Do you ever go around and spot check? We just talked about the one. Is there any other ones that you say, well, it's not quite what we'd like to see, and maybe we ought to circle on back?
We do, yeah. The four years, in average. There are certainly some hotels where we check more frequently. As a whole, the whole intention of the audits is not necessarily to find additional money, as it is to encourage compliance on the front, knowing that we're looking. IRS works on the same principle, only their audit rates are significantly lower. We do audit every hotel. And the hotels would probably argue that our audits are much more thorough than an IRS audit would be. So, but yes, we absolutely, we have those that like to push the envelope on a few things. And so, yeah, we're there every couple of years, or if necessary, every year. But we have, that hasn't been necessary in some time.
Okay. And just another question separate from that. You talked about investment of funds, the 130 million or whatever it was. With the incoming authority, did we lose some funds there, investment funds, significant funds, or?
No, because as an authority there, eligible participated in the pool.
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about as we separated.
Well, yeah, well, no, because I'm not sure that that really affected the county's general fund balance.
Because those are enterprise funds?
Because of, we still, maybe it did bring it down a little bit, but much of the county's investment in the airport remains because we still own the property.
Correct.
Now, that's not cash that we can invest, but it wasn't cash two years ago either. It was a runway or a building. So we have not seen a significant decline in the general fund balance because of that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Pronsting?
Thank you, Ulter. Ken, thanks for not losing any money. I think that's the most important thing, but.
You're welcome.
But my question is on the hotel tax also. If we're going to add another staff, the funding of those positions to collect the tax that benefits so many others, does the general fund pay for that, or do we get reimbursed from the hotel motel tax?
It's paid for out of the hotel motel fund.
All of it. So to add another one isn't going to affect?
It will not, it would not affect the general.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Commissioner Steck?
And I'm not necessarily suggesting a second full-time person either. I'm just putting it out there that it's something that's on my radar screen for either additional staffing might be full-time, might be part-time, might be outside contract. There's a lot of avenues we can go.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning.
A couple of questions. With the hotel motel or the lodging tax, is Airbnb subject to that tax?
My, my position on that is no, because they are not, in my opinion, they are not in the business of providing accommodations. They are, and I equate it to a garage sale. Somebody holds a garage sale, some people hold a garage sale every weekend, but it's a garage sale. Is that taxable revenue to the state? No. So our ordinance talks about entities in the business of providing accommodations. And somebody, in my opinion, who rents out a room in their home occasionally, that's not their business. It's a secondary activity.
Of course, if they rented it out every weekend, that might be different. But any idea how much of that activity goes on in Kent County?
I do not. I understand it's fairly prevalent, but I am not familiar with the numbers.
Okay. So my other question is with respect to your investment protocol. It seems to me in the past report, you had an investment statement as to how you place and where you place that investment. Has that changed at all?
No, no. We follow the county's investment policy. The board, through the work groups, review that every two years. That policy has not changed substantially in the last probably six to eight years that I can recall. So the policy itself, which actually is even more stringent than state law, it's more restrictive. So that's been the policy that we follow.
Okay, so the board sets that policy?
Yes, yes. It's a part of your fiscal policy.
If we wanted to tell you, but most of that into futures, or metals, or hog futures, you would have to follow that?
If you tell me to do something that's legal, yes. What you just, the various items you proposed are not allowed under state law. But yes, we would, you do have input into the investment policy.
So we do set it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thanks. Your hard work in keeping things floating and all that stuff. Do you know how much we pay in interest in an annual, or in a year?
Not off the top of my head.
I mean, is there some tally that you or Fiscal Services keeps of interest that we pay on all of our indebtedness?
I, in Fiscal Services, I'm sure reports that through the financial statements. You know, it's, it's in, you know, a lot of different pots, you know, of money because of, but, so yes, I'm sure it's accounted for. I just, I don't know specifically what that amount would be.
Yeah, because, you know, it's great that you show that our interest that we're going to earn is going up. And at least, I think most of our bonds are probably fixed rates so that it won't go up in current additional indebtedness. I still am of the opinion that you should be adding a fourth bullet point to this slide and to explore the possibility of borrowing from ourselves. That we have, you know, all told, what, $390 million on deposit? When we looked at, you know, the possibility of bonding for a new building at Fuller Campus, it was still going to cost us $5 million. And we can talk about, yeah, but a AAA bond rating saved us X. We're still spending $5 million borrowing money from somebody, have $400 million in the bank. And I understand the liquidity and all that stuff, but if we can't borrow 10% of that nest egg from ourselves or from others, I mean, some of us in this room are old enough to remember when, when interest rates were near 20%. And at that time.
I'm not one of those.
Okay. Well, Google it, Google it, and I'm sure there's a great YouTube video on it. And, I mean, at that time, full disclosure, my dad worked for Spartan Stores. And you could deposit money at Spartan, and they'd pay you 1% more than Prime. It was cheaper than them borrowing that from the bank. They paid their people that plus 1%. If we look at what measly return that the municipalities are getting on their, on our shared pool, if we paid 1% more than that, we're all making out, I would assume. And that would be an awesome bullet point for you to put on this, and it would be some great creativity. Not to say what you don't do now is creative, but how do we really, again, we have the resources, it could still be liquid, still could be safe. And if something terrible, terrible... terrible, 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 we're in, it's gonna happen to everybody, so, I, I mean, for us to like hold tight to so much cash and all of that, I just think there's opportunities there that would be way beyond our current win-wins that we have. So, and if there's a change of state law needed, we go to Lansing, we ask for state laws to be changed. Um, I don't want hog futures to be on our list, unlike Commissioner Steck, um, but, but at least if we could borrow from ourselves, should be allowed by state law. And so I'm just gonna keep pushing for that. So I'm, I'm gonna follow up on my rhetorical question as well of last week when you were, or two weeks ago when you were talking about the land bank. Cause you noted that you do support the triple A bond rating and you're gonna keep doing that and, and the clear majority of this board does as well. However, if you were of the opinion that, "No, double A plus is more than good enough and that's what I'm gonna do," what, what would happen if we as the county commission says triple A is our, and a, and a separately elected treasurer says, "No, I'm shooting for double A plus." Who wins? And again, and, and that's a rhetorical question for today, 'cause not only treasurer, it's sheriff, it's judges, what really is our authority in this partnership or, or shared authority in these partnerships with other electeds? So I, I, I would really like us to dig into that, 'cause sometimes it pops up, what can we really say or do with other electeds? So for today, keep working on it, at least that's the majority. We like that and we'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you Chair and apologies to you and, and Ken and everyone. Mayor Bliss has it out for me and has apparently closed every road between my house and here. Um, I just wanna follow up on what Commissioner Steck mentioned about Airbnb because I think that, um, I think this is something we probably should pay closer attention to. Um, I think it perhaps started out as millennials, uh, renting out couches to strangers to Couch Surf, um, but now I think it's becoming bigger and bigger business. Um, you know, we just took a family vacation to Europe, uh, and we did several Airbnbs where we were working with a multinational corporation, um, and who was simply buying investment properties and renting them out. They weren't living there. Um, and I think we oughta really look into, uh, whether or not that, um, is something that us are doing. Uh, look at, take a, a close look at Michigan law and see what we can do to find out exactly what is happening in our community, um, because I think that we are possibly losing out on some significant revenue, um, and in addition are probably not being particularly fair to our, our brick and mortar hotels. So I would really strongly encourage you to, um, take a closer look at what's happening here on, on Airbnbs and, and not to just signal out that company, but there are companies that are really in the, that are really, as, and I can't remember your exact definition, but are really in that business of consistently providing accommodations across the board.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions for treasurer pairs today? I just had one, um, I can't remember specifically your, uh, presentation every year, but did you used to get something, or can you tell us where are we at in terms of property tax values going up in the county? Are we year over year?
Property tax-
Like values going up?
Values.
What we're collecting and?
Um, that actually, the, the value information comes from Matt Wolford.
Okay, okay.
Um, and I'm sure he does at least one presentation every year.
All right, good. Thank you so much for your presentation today.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
All right, item four, we have, uh, appointment to the KDL. We have your, uh, information, Mayor Prackett and the appointee. Can we leave that?
Sure. This is a request to recommend to the board to appoint Thomas Norin to the Kent District Library Board to fill an unexpired term, four-year term ending December 31, 2018. A citizen vacancy has occurred on the Kent District Library Board for Region One, which includes Nelson, Oakville, Spencer, Tyrone, Townships. An interview team consisting of Vandy Bolter and Commissioners Emily Breve and Stan Steck reviewed applications, interviewed candidates and is recommending the appointment of Thomas Norin to the Kent District Library Board to fill the unexpired term.
All right, can I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Thank Commissioner Steck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Skaggs. All in favor? Do you have any questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All closed. All right, moving on to item five, one of the court system advisory committee changes and duties to membership.
This is a recommendation, uh, of at least, to provide at least one commissioner for appointment to the front of the court advisory committee for which that commissioner may be eligible and to formally add the following duties to the committee, which would be to review performance measurements on customer service and efficacy of enforcement, review as related to support orders and enforcement program practices, present an annual report to the chief circuit court judge and the board of commissioners. On August 24, 2017, the board of commissioners adopted the report recommendations of the front of the court community engagement task force, which included increasing board of commissioners involvement on the front of the court advisory committee and adding to the duties of the committee. Members of the committee is statutorily defined to include a non-custodial parent, a custodial parent, an attorney who engages primary in family, uh, primarily in family law practice, the county sheriff or the sheriff's desk knee, the prosecuting attorney or the prosecuting attorney's desk knee, the director of the family independence agency or the director's desk knee, a mental health professional who provides family counseling and two members of the general public who are not serving on the committee in one of the other categories. However, commissioners may be appointed as they are eligible for and take the place of stakeholder slots not served, not serving by virtue of office. To increase board of commissioners involvement on the committee, the legislative and human resources committee will recommend appointment of at least one commissioner to a stakeholder slot. The duties of the, the committee are also statutorily prescribed and include advising the court and the county board of commissioners on the office of the front of the court and the front of the fees and performance and on the community's needs related to the office's services and submitting an annual report to the county board, board and the court. These duties will now include review of front of court performance measurements on customer service and efficacy of the bench warrant enforcement program, review of grievances related to support orders and enforcement programs and presentation of an annual report to the chief judge and the board of commissioners.
So, a lot of ands.
Supported by Commissioner Cornick, supported by Commissioner Pronsting. Um, Commissioner Bukowski, do you have any comments or, you did a lot of work on this?
Well, and again, with Commissioner Cornick, Commissioner Rahis and the whole committee, um, it was something that, you know, it just kind of bubbled up in our conversations 'cause we look at all the other committees that one or two of us are part of and, and it just, it just helps, um, to have one of us there, you know? It's just, again, it's, it's a, it's an accident, not in a bad sense, that all of a sudden like, "Wow, what, there's not a commissioner on that?" And so the committee said, "Yeah, let's do it," or "Let's recommend it," since they couldn't do it. So it's just making its way through. Yeah.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you Chair. Just to clarify, when it talks about identification of a commissioner to, to a stakeholder slot, that is not a stakeholder as profiled in it. So it doesn't have to be a commissioner who is either a custodial or a non-custodial, it'll be a separate stakeholder profile. They need to be commissioner only.
Very good. Explain that.
I mean, it could, I mean, just as Mary's coming up, Commissioner Chivvis, who used to be on, on the board, was in one of these spots as a custodial parent.
True, but I think, as I read the saying, we're gonna look for a commissioner who fits one of these other profiles for-
Right. We would take one of the general ones, if all else fails.
Eric?
Technically, you would be allowed. I mean, I used stakeholders in drafting this rather generically. Technically, under the statute, uh, what former council Tom Dempsey informed the committee is if a commissioner meets one of the area, he or she may be appointed to that slot. I think though, um, that'll be at the discretion of the legislative and human resources committee and as we looked at this with, with corporate counsel because of the, um, general nature of the two at-large slots, that is more than likely where it would, uh, come from.
So an at-large is a pretty wide open profile, so. I, I might even fit that.
There you go.
I'm not volunteering.
Okay, more, more to do.
I support that motion.
I understand.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll post. All right, moving on to item six, miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Milton?
Thank you Chair. Um, couple of comments. I decided I can stand up there longer. I, I do understand the, the idea of the Airbnb. Um, I know that they have a huge, uh, convention once a year in Los Angeles and the only way I know this is because my daughter traveled, daughter and son-in-law, for a year and a half and their entire trip, um, all over the world, fifty-two countries, they stayed at Airbnb every night. Um, and they were therefore invited to this thing and they talked about it. It's, it's quite a, I don't understand how it works, but it, it certainly is becoming a business. Um, it's, it's not just an opening of your home and the number of people who buy places, never meaning to live there, but to rent them out. Um, we actually stayed in one in Australia and she has never lived in the house. So again, just food for thought. Um, and as far as, uh, what Dave had to say, I know that certainly that is a question that comes up, probably the number one question outside of the timing of our board meetings. For me, in my dis, why do we have so much money that nobody uses? And, um, I try to the best of my ability to explain it. I think that it's a very good thing. I'm very proud of the bond rating, but, um, I agree that, that exploring other options is certainly always a good thing to do, so. Uh, and then the third is, um, I had a delightful evening last night and I don't know if you all know, but among us is a very famous comedian. Um, we, I went to the disability-
Oh, hey, no.
The disability, yeah. It's a fundraiser last night with my mother-in-law and, um, uh, none other than our own, Mr. Bukowski, uh, did the top, I don't know how many you finally did, but, um, he had quite a stand-up show at the very end, but on a, on a more serious note, what a wonderful, wonderful program your group or organization put on, well-organized, um, certainly money well-spent, um, time well-spent and it was truly a delightful evening and I learned a lot. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, uh, thank you for those remarks and, um, the, we honored John D. and Mary Loaks for their, uh, investing ability over many, many years and so maybe I'll say a little more on Thursday. But for now, I just wanted to let you know that, um, I am after this meeting going to the far-off land of, uh, the city of Grand Rapids, um, with Mary as backup to present the front of the advisory committee report to the city commission and talk about our recommendations and in that partnership. Commissioner Lanier was part of that committee as well and, and, uh, she continues to, to be concerned, uh, you know, and watching, making sure that progress continues to be made along that. And then also to note that, um, Judge, Judge Zomitis cleared his calendar to be with us and, you know, it's good to see Dan here as well. The front of the court, again, and the judges took this opportunity to really, they're doing and, and they continue to be ahead of our recommendations to improve stuff. So it's great to see that when staff, again, takes the opportunity to look at stuff and says, "Yeah, we should be doing a little more on early intervention and helping folks really understand how the system works. One day we will have a friend of the family to work with a friend of the court." However, we are moving in that direction, um, again, as staff continues to do that. So excited about that, my travels in fifteen minutes and, uh, I'll report anything exciting happens. If it's just not exciting, we'll leave it at that.
Great. Commissioner Cornick.
Thank you Chair. I'll jump into the Airbnb discussion as well. I had a constituent call me a couple of months ago in regards to this. They heard that a house across the street was selling to be an Airbnb extensively. So, uh, I called my, one of my friendly city commissioners and had a chat with him about that and he checked into it and there is an ordinance in the city of Grand Rapids that you can't extensively have a home for an Airbnb. I'm not sure how the other municipalities handle that, but, uh, I think it is something that will be emerging, you know, in the near future with, uh, like Commissioner Skaggs said, multi, um, conglomerates trying to buy properties and rent them out and make, uh, make it into a business. So maybe that's something that we wanna think about in the future, putting on our legislative agenda. Lansing, I mean, I hear these ads about, uh, the realtors that, that wanna allow this to happen, so I don't know what's going on in Lansing, if they're dealing with this or not, but, uh, maybe it's something we wanna put on our radar for next year or into the future to at least take a look at and see how that might affect, you know, the hotel motel, uh, industry in our county because, uh, we rely heavily on that tax for economic development and we wanna make sure that, uh, you know, we don't disturb that at all. So, thank you.
Any other commissioner who's today?
All right, I just have one item. Want to make an announcement that we need to start up our, our subcommittees to fill all of our, uh, community vacancies for our community, um, commissions and boards and you'll be getting an email kind of laying out specifically what, uh, which ones you're going to be working on, but so far, um, kind of the subcommittees I put together, myself, Commissioner Bukowski on one, Commissioner Steck, Ponsting and Skaggs on another, and Breve, Cornick and Milton on the third. So we'll be getting an email. We need to kinda get those interviews going. We ultimately need to confirm them at, uh, the end of November. So Pam has your binders in the back, I believe, and, uh, maybe you might even wanna huddle and get together in terms of putting together times for your, and stuff that you're, give for your availability, but, uh, before we tell that, so.
Chair, what's our deadline?
Um, love to have everybody done by the end of October, but- End of October.
October, this year, October, not next year.
Yeah. I'm sorry, end of, uh, middle of November because we have to confirm them by end of November. So we need to get rolling on it.
All right.
All right. There is nothing else today. We are adjourned.